You need to go through the process and make sure everybody can hear and be heard.
Right, so why don't you just call the Finance Committee to order and not do that? And then I'll do the council, which will include everybody, and then I'll do the additional people.
Okay.
Okay.
Lynn, when you're ready, you can cue Emmerich Media.
And I'm doing that by doing what, recording?
By saying we're ready.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Emmerich Media, we're ready.
Go ahead, Andy.
Okay, Andy?
Good, good evening. It's 6:30 PM and it's June 8th of 2020. And I'm going to, in a moment, call the Finance Committee to order. What is happening this evening is that the town charter requires that Finance Committee hold hearings on any budget that is going to be considered. And this is a public hearing for two, actually, it's two different public hearings for two different budgets. The first one is the budget for the regional school district. And after we call to the committee and the council to order, we will then proceed to the hearing and I'll explain the hearing process. But I'm now, my name's Andrew Steinberg. I am the Chair of the Finance Committee. And I'm going to turn this over for a moment to the Council President Lynn Griesmer, who's going to call to order the council.
Okay. Given that we have a quorum of the Emmerich Town Council, I am calling the council to order at 6:31. We're going to now go through the process of making sure you can hear us and we can hear you. And if at any time during the process we have difficulty, we will either stop the meeting or make note that somebody has not been able to continue. So I'm not going to do this in particular order, but in order of my screen. Andy Steinberg, can you hear me?
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer, yes. Kathy Shane?
Yes.
George Ryan?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Yes.
Darcy Dumont? Darcy, can you unmute and confirm you can hear us?
Yes, I hear you.
Thank you. Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Mandy Jo Hanke?
Yes.
Okay, and then in addition to that, we have two people, three people. I missed two counselors. Ah, Shalene Ball-Millen, and can you hear me?
Yes.
And Evan Ross?
Yes.
Thank you. And then we, in addition to that, we have three members who are non-voting resident members of the Finance Committee. Bob Hegner?
Yes.
Aaron Pulvinelli?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and Mary Lou Tyman?
Yes.
Okay, and then since we have the school people starting first, I want to make sure that Mike Morris can hear us. Thank you, Superintendent. Doug Slaughter?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and I saw you earlier. Where are you? Allison McDonald?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Andy, why don't you start?
Well, first of all, I want to remind everyone that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 18, this meeting, which is a joint meeting of the council and the Finance Committee, is being conducted via remote participation. And having said that, and to think we're convening now the meeting of the Finance Committee in addition to having already convened the meeting of the council. So this is the first of two budget hearings, as I just explained. The hearing is required by Section 5.5 of the Emmerich Home Rule Charter and is pursuant to Council Rules of Procedure, Rule 5.2. We are going to first have the hearing of the, regarding the regional school budget. And so this is the process that I'm going to proceed by, which is consistent with Rule 5.2. It generally follows the outline, but there is the provision in the rule for making appropriate modifications for budget hearings, which is what this is. And so we're going to start with the presentation of the budget by the Superintendent of Schools with the participation of staff that he's going to introduce to us and the Chair of the Regional School Committee, who he can also introduce to us. After his presentation, I'm going to then open it up first to council members and members of the Finance Committee, all eight members of the Finance Committee. Of course, five are also council members. And I'm going to try and recognize from the council members and Finance Committee in order that I see hands going up in the raise hand function. And after questions from the council and Finance Committee, we then open it up to any public attendees who wish to either ask questions or make comments regarding the budget. At the conclusion of that portion, if any other council members have any other comments to make after having heard from members of the public, or we'll entertain any final comments, and that will conclude the first hearing. And then we will proceed to the second hearing unless it is not yet seven o'clock, at which point we will have to recess because the second meeting, which is regarding the town manager's proposed July budget for the town, which is a one-month budget, is a separate hearing that was posted for 30 minutes after this one. So with that introduction, I want to welcome our Superintendent Mike Morris. And Superintendent Morris, please make a presentation. Tell us a little bit about the budget that you're asking the council and its Finance Committee to consider.
Sure. So first, I just want to acknowledge Chairman McDonald, who's with us today. So thank you for coming on the call. And I'll hand it over, and I'm conscious of the time constraint that Counselor Steinberg mentioned. So I'll try to be brief in my comments, as will Dr. Slaughter, because we know there's other things on your agenda this evening. So the regional school budget was passed in March and repassed again in late May. And because of the situation with COVID and the financial implications, it meant cutting a couple hundred thousand dollars from our budget. And it's a particularly hard time of year. If you watch any show, Johns Hopkins had a really good presentation recently. ASBO, which is the National Association of School Business Managers or school business officials, as well as my professional organization, came out with a budget report today that suggested that doing school next year will be more expensive, not less expensive. Given all the CDC precautions, there was a very lengthy presentation last week. So if anyone's curious about what that looks like, please encourage you to watch the Joint School Committee meeting that was last Wednesday night or go to our website, which has a presentation from that. And so what we tried to do is we knew that reducing staff is not going to be a viable strategy because we're going to need all hands on deck to make some sort of schooling work, given the CDC requirements. And so you will not see many reductions in staffing. And that's certainly, we value our staff and that's part of it. But the other part of it is, in order to have school function next year, we need as many staff as we can possibly have. And so it put us in a somewhat precarious situation. We think we've drafted a budget that, well, we know we drafted a budget that met the guidelines that was expressed. It's a challenging budget. It's one that we think can be fiscally responsible and hopefully be implemented with fidelity next year. The other thing I want to be really clear about is, or to be unclear about, is we don't know what school looked like, right? That presentation last week was the beginning of a conversation. We have a survey out with over 700 responses right now from staff and families about what school might look like, given the CDC requirements. Some of the questions you all have tonight will probably be great questions that are unanswerable, excuse me. Because at this point, DESI has not yet to even release its guidance. That won't come out till next week on what it's recommending, let alone what we're able to do. So we are in a very difficult situation as it relates to opening school. We know how critical it is for students and frankly, for the community that were able to open school for as many kids as possible next year. We know the long-term consequences of not doing this well. And with that, that's where we find ourselves as we come to this budget. So we did have unanimous school committee support in passing it. I think the last thing I'll suggest before I turn it over to Dr. Slaughter is how incredibly challenging this is for everyone, for staff members, administrators. We're essentially trying to recreate what school looks like with wildly different rules. And it's upended what we think of as education. We've had to incur significant costs in different places because of that. And the uncertainty is very hard. We talk, you know, superintendents come to town councils every year and we talk about what changes and, you know, to us and to educators, it feels like large changes. I know to members of the public, it could be, perhaps feel like smaller changes. This is significant second-order change that we're talking about and first-order change and second-order change and third-order change. It's really resetting what education is. And so I think some of the uncertainty that may be felt in some of the responses because we're still trying to engage the community to make the best choices, in this case for the four towns, as well as for the Emmerich, I'll speak to Emmerich, but there's a regional budget, of how to put together an educational program that's going to be most effective for students, given the CDC requirements. Again, because of time, I won't go into them. That may be interesting to you, but, you know, ad nauseam, so to speak, in a very long meeting last Wednesday night that people can watch. So with all that, those caveats and that context setting, I'll turn it over to Dr. Slaughter, who has a brief presentation before we open up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. I'll begin, and I'll share my screen here. Hopefully, I can do this without much issue, just to sort of take you through a few slides that I've prepared, that you've gotten. And so hopefully, everyone can see this without issue. This is a new slide that was put into your packet this afternoon, I believe. And I thought I'd start with this because it helps to sort of frame where we normally are as far as a budget process and things we may need to encounter relative to our budget process. So to start with, you know, in normal circumstances with a regional school budget, what happens is that the Regional School Committee goes ahead and adopts and recommends, adopts a budget, recommends an assessment method. Then those go to the council and the town meetings of the three other communities. And three of the four towns must adopt the budget in order for it to be adopted. But given that we use an alternative assessment method, every single town must accept the alternative assessment method in order for us to have a full budget. And so that hasn't changed. That has been the status quo for us for a number of years. If we are to amend the budget during the fiscal year, which very well, given the unknowns that we have, could occur, I thought I'd just share with you some of the things that would happen process-wise for us regarding that amendment process. So first order, or first thing that has to happen is any budget decrease or reduction in assessment amounts only requires the Regional School Committee to approve of those changes. So anything that reduces the burden on any of the member communities or reduces the overall expenditure of the district is allowed by Regional School Committee vote. It is a two-thirds majority required in that circumstance, but it doesn't require action by the appropriating authorities in the communities, which is the town council in Emmerich and the town meeting in the other three towns. If the budget itself increases, and so the Regional School Committee recognizes that we need to increase the expenditure level of the budget, three of the four towns need to agree to that, even if the assessed amounts don't change. So if, for some reason, we have additional state aid than what we expect and we wish to expend that for the purposes of, you know, the programming in our schools for the coming fiscal year, we can do that, but it still requires three to four communities to say yes to that. Likewise, if, and maybe more importantly, if we have a change such that the assessment to a given town or all four towns needs to increase, any town whose assessment changes or needs an increase must approve that change. So we may have a budget that stays flat, but we need to assess more of the communities. If one of the community's assessment changes and the others don't, that one community would have to approve that assessment. Now, the way our assessment works, the recommended assessment method works, if one town's assessment changes, they all change. So it could be an interesting circumstance. But if the assumptions we have regarding minimum contributions that communities have to make changes after we've sort of set this budget, it could be an odd circumstance where an individual community might have an assessment amount change. And then they would have to go back to town meeting and vote on that. At the bottom of the slide, I placed a little bit of context from a history standpoint on Emmerich, you know, assessment over the last few years. These are the budgeted numbers. And then likewise, the overall budget for the regional school district. And these, again, are based on budget numbers. As we go to the next slide, you'll see when we put some actuals in there for fiscal 18 and 19, those percentages from the previous year change a little bit based on the actuals of the year. But what you see in that slide is that, you know, we've held the percentage change in assessment to Emmerich within the guidance of the Finance Committee over the last few years. But that often doesn't match or mirror what happens to the budget as a whole. And so the budget as a whole typically goes up a much smaller amount year over year than you might expect relative to a particular school's or town's assessment. And that assessment's, you know, as you may or may not know, is a fairly complex calculation. It's based on a variety of factors. The way we do it, one of which is how many kids are from Emmerich in the school district, but also based on a factor of ability to pay, based on what's called EQV, which has to do with a wage factor, in other words, income basis, as well as the property values within the community. So it's a fairly complex calculation that's involved in calculating those assessments. And so it doesn't track smoothly necessarily, although we try to put in, and the assessment method we try to pick is one to mitigate the large spikes, both positive and negative, to any given community within the region. Slide to the next slide. So on this page, so we generally start from a standpoint of a level services budget. And then we calculate as best we can, given that we usually do this in the fall. And, you know, we're only about a quarter of the way into a fiscal year. We're trying to project our level services for the coming year. And then we tend to look at our resources and get some guidance from the various towns about their ability, given their projections for revenue, what they might be able to pay. And we recognized even before the COVID crisis that we were going to have to reduce the budget from level services by a significant amount. And so at that time, we were taking out about $322,000 worth of expenses in order to meet the revenue we thought we were going to get in what I've thought about today is the Halcyon days of January, relative to revenue predictions for the commonwealth. Obviously, since the COVID crisis kicked in, we've adjusted what we think revenues are likely to look like and what we've gotten feedback from the member towns about what they think they can afford. And so we've tried to, you know, take that into account and put that into place here. And so a couple of things I'll point out. Anything in yellow is something that we've done since the COVID crisis hit. In particular, one thing I'll point out on the revenue side, which is the CARES Act. So that is an infusion of money. I know it's showing as a negative number with the parentheses around it, but that's actually reduces your expenses essentially. But like, but also immediately below that is an estimate of a reduction in state support. So we didn't, and don't have any particular insight as to how or what will be reduced from a state support standpoint, but we do have an expectation of a pretty significant drop. It could be Chapter 70, it could be transportation aid to the region. It could play into some of the other factors around special education support and that sort of thing. So we sort of left it in a bit of a block of an estimate of reduction and didn't try to assign it to any particular category. And then, of course, so those, essentially, the CARES Act is prescribed and dictated by the legislation that passed on the federal level and, you know, the states using a Title I distribution. So our sort of slice for the regional school district is about $230,000. That's a fairly firm number. So it offsets a fair amount of that that we were expecting to cut. But we made some additional reductions in expenses to try to meet the constraints that the member towns are under relative to the revenue they think they have to fund the school and the rest of their operations. And so we made an additional set of reductions of $494,000 on top of what we had already done coming into the beginning of March. And so what that results in is this more detailed budget here, and I won't go into too much detail, but, you know, there's a number of factors even within this, even, you know, that are, as with all budgets, a bit of the circumstances as we understood them at the time, you know. So we have some areas of the budget that may look like they're rather large increases relative to the circumstances we find ourselves. But I think that, you know, some of the increases that you see in this column are reversed by virtue of this reduction of $816,000, which is the 322 and the 494. So those kind of offset and reduce the overall budget. So we actually have an almost level services budget. It's actually a little below, I mean, not level services, level funded budget. It's actually a little below level funded from the current fiscal year to next fiscal year. And so I'll slide to the next slide here and just to show you. And so we've had under discussion a number of assessment methodologies over the recent years. The assessment methodology that is currently being recommended by the school committee is this one with this kind of a beige or, I guess, a beige or tan sort of color. It's the 45% statutory five-year average method. That gets into part of how the calculation is done to do the assessment. It was the recommended method coming into, to the approval of the budget previous to the COVID crisis. And so we've remained with that because it was, you know, the conversations we had had with the communities about our shifting of assessment method over a number of years to a slightly different model. This was another step in the process. The member towns were familiar and comfortable with that. And with the reduction in the overall budget, what you see in this, in this slide is that the recommended assessment parameters is just a little below the fiscal 20 number. So the fiscal 20 number is here, the fiscal 21 number is here. And it's about, just a little, about $40,000 less than the current year's assessment. So with the exception of Levert, each of the four communities is actually having a lower assessment than they do in fiscal 20. Trying to think, one other thing I'll point out, and this is something I said earlier, is that we asterisk the Chapter 70 and the transportation reimbursement. There's really some others in here that could be as well. And that's just to note that we didn't know, we left our projections from pre-COVID situation. We left those projections in place. And then we have, by virtue of our cuts required, we've sort of factored that in. So the projections for revenue there on the chart from the state don't reflect the actual thinking that we have. It's just, we didn't have a place to sort of specifically put it. And so we kept it into the sort of cuts required section, but it effectively will affect, will affect Chapters. Chapter 70 is likely to be smaller. Transportation reimbursement is guaranteed to be smaller, almost guaranteed to be smaller. And some of the others may be affected a little bit as well. Our use of BND and some of that will be, will be as we have predicted and projected here. And so that lays out the assessment methods and the one in particular that we're recommending for this year. I think at this point, I'll pivot to the last slide, which is a significant change in our expectation around capital. We recognize that the current fiscal year is, had a rather significant alteration of plans. And so we knew that we would probably be in a situation where revenues for fiscal '22 will also likely be challenging to work with. And so by reducing our capital plan rather significantly and trying to anticipate some of the costs that we're going to have to incur for COVID-related expenses, we're trying to formulate a capital plan that will, you know, keep the kids safe, keep the buildings moving toward the direction we want them to, but at the same time, recognize that this, the choices we make here in our capital plan also impact our communities relative to the assessment they need to pay. And so one of the things also about capital is that we don't have cash capital the way Emmerich does. So we're not setting aside a certain portion of our revenue for the purposes of doing capital projects. Obviously, if we have revenues above expectations or actually really expenses below expectation, so that we have resources available, we'll sometimes do a capital project with resources like that. But in general, we borrow the money for our capital expenditure. And what happens is that we appropriate, we do the borrowing in January or February. That sets your assessment for the next year. And so that's why the assessment, if you're looking at those numbers from earlier, the assessment for debt from the region did not change, even though we've altered the budget and we've significantly altered our capital plan because the borrowing that we would do for these items on the capital plan that I'm displaying now will not be a part of the assessment, the debt assessment to the town of Emmerich until fiscal '22. So that was part of the thinking as far as trying to mitigate the sort of out-years and the longer-term effect of the difficulty we'll likely see in revenues for the state. So what, by reducing our capital planning here, we're really sort of trying to think even further ahead into fiscal '22 in some respects. And so that's part and parcel of that. Obviously, on the COVID-19 needs, you know, at the time we bring this together and even still, we're trying to shape our idea of what we need to purchase and things we'll need to implement in our schools to make them function safely and well for the students. There will be some aspects of this that will be covered by some money from the federal government, but I doubt that all of it will be. And so that's the rationale behind putting in a placeholder for about $75,000 for the purposes of trying to meet the needs of some COVID-related items, probably ones that won't be covered by federal reimbursement. The other two projects, the walk-in cooler freezer is a scaled-back version of that project. And then the grounds improvement is really the removal of a modular on the back of the high school. It's been slated for removal. It's really starting to become unsafe and a bit of a problem relative to fire risk and that sort of thing. So we really wanted to take care of that before it got much, much worse. So I think at this point, I'll stop. This has been the slides that I have. And I'll turn it back to the superintendent in case he wants to add any additional comments relative to what I presented to you and be happy to answer any of your questions.
Given the time, I'll turn it over to the Chair of these committees to see if there's questions. But thank you, Dr. Slaughter.
Yeah, well, thank you, Dr. Slaughter and Superintendent Morris. So to remind everyone who's watching the meeting, the next two steps that we're going to proceed through is that I am going to be looking for raised hands from members of the council and members of the Finance Committee. So all eight members of the Finance Committee and members of the council. And I'm going to do my best to try and spot order, but if a bunch of hands go up at the same time, I won't be perfect in that score. And proceed through. This is the one presentation for the council of the regional school budget. And the process that we're going to be engaging in next is, and it will be discussed again at the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow. And the process that we're going to be engaging in next is that will be discussed again at the finance committee meeting tomorrow, but without the superintendent or Dr. Slaughter being present. And we will, as a finance committee, make a recommendation to the council, which is scheduled to take the budget up on June 29. But this is for all of the council, your opportunity to ask questions about the budget and anything that's related to the budget that you think is important to bring forward. So please take that opportunity. And I see the first hand that was raised is from Councilor Shane. Kathy?
Thank you, Andy. I think I'll just try to focus on making sure I understand the the numbers and because I'm on finance, so tomorrow we can ask some other questions. So when you went through the slide, Doug, that showed cuts and additions and you had, one was you were prepaying the out-of-district. So that you're, are you able to do that? Because in this current year, you had enough funds that you could prepay. And will you likely be able to have that again next year? So part of what I'm worried about is not just this coming year, but the year after it. So that seemed like you had a buffer there because you you got 170,000 out of that, being able to move it. So was that because there was, you know, with an excess or you had some money in this year's budget that you could do that?
I can I can try to answer that one, Doug. So the short story is we froze our budget on March 13th, except for essential COVID-19 related items because we knew we saw the storm coming, the fiscal storm. And it was a way to preserve for one year, knowing the towns were going to have an incredibly hard time preserve some of the staffing and other things that we knew we'd need moving forward. So we can't bank on that moving forwards. We are, we tend to budget conservatively. So it's not the only year, if you go back, we prepaid tuitions. Mr. Mangano could fill you in with more details and is wearing his former hat that's still dusty, but I'm sure it's in the closet. And but it is, you're rightly noting that it's not something you can necessarily count on year in, year out. But it is something that we got incredibly conservative on March 13th, and this is exactly why.
Okay. And then if I look at the amount of money for CARES, which is a flow in, is that your best guess right now? Or is that, you said it's fairly solid. So that is that money in your hands, more or less? So I'm just trying to get, where is the uncertainty even on the numbers you've got on this table?
Yep. So this is money that has been assigned to us using a DESI calculation on Title I. It is the case that compared to the Great Recession, where this inflation adjusted, the federal government spent about 128, 129 billion, trillion dollars on billion dollars on K to 12 education or plus K through higher ed. So far, they've spent 27. And that was during a less challenging fiscal time without the social distancing and other needs in the pandemic. So I I think to your point, this will help us for next year. And I would urge you as counselors to be advocating that the federal government play a larger role. I'm happy to send slide deck after YouTube video of experts on this who are saying if the federal government doesn't stop, doesn't jump in, schools will not be able to function in the future. And so there is a bill that passed the House, whether that passes the Senate, who knows? But they are the only ones who can jump into this situation. And again, if anyone needs backup, please email me. I'm happy to send you more YouTube videos of experts or articles than you probably want to look at or read.
Then I'm just going to go down my list as quickly as I can. So the the guesstimate of a cut in state aid, about what percent did you go ahead and take the leap? I know this is a guess. So the dollar amount. So you know, I was, I actually went back and looked at some of the 2010 and 202006, like what happened to us last time. So I just, I don't know what you put in here. And if you don't have that right now, I can ask it again tomorrow.
I'd defer to Doug on that one.
Okay.
So, I mean, as a percentage, I mean, this the state typically gives us oh, a little over $10 million. So it's it's, you know, it's a small percentage. That's a short story.
Yep. Then on, when I looked at the payroll accounts, and I realized when I went to the next page, you had sort of a pre-COVID FY21. And then at the very bottom, you subtracted out the things, but the administrative cost, central administrative, and then the school administrative went up by about six, a little over 6%, but on the cuts page, you took out a dean. So if is that that's before you've done the adjustment on the top, it just looked like somehow the administrative staff was increasing more than teaching staff was on on the, as I said, it's the FY21 before you took out the the pieces. So.
Yeah, and that's 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 exactly it. Kathy, that's that was based on a level services budget and some things rolled over. There were other administrative cuts even before the COVID-related cuts, so to speak, that cut into administration. There are no new administrative positions that are proposed in this budget at all. And if you look at the cuts page, we tried to keep things as way far away from the classroom. In terms of RIFs or reduction in force notices at the regional level, all this resulted in a point for RIF, and that was mostly based on someone returning from a one-year position. So we really kept things away. We're not reducing sections or we're not reducing teacher load. This was purely based on someone who was in a coaching role, returning to a teaching role. But there were no program cuts. There were no offering cuts. There are no course cuts based on these this budget.
Okay. And am I right in assuming that the non-union staff got a 2% COLA so that there is there is that built into this budget?
There is. So the non-unit staff in FY19 took a zero. Just for background for people who weren't aware of that, things aren't optimistic in terms of that, looking forward for FY22 and to think of that happening three out of four years for people who are, I can't get to take vacation, as Paul and I have spoken. Literally, I wanted to shut down the diser for a couple of days because of how intense this process has been and will be over the summer. And they're saying, no, I'll just lose my vacation days because contractually they can max out. I felt for morale and and for what people are putting in and what they've been through, as well as what they will be through. It felt felt fair and equitable that they would have the same COLA as the teachers for next year.
Okay. And I think my my very last question is the substitute line in the operating budget as you're looking forward. It didn't go up very much. And I did listen into your classroom discussion on configuration.
Yeah.
And it, including that any teacher who feels sick should stay home. And so what do you do with the classroom? So it so just on, that's one that I think as the year rolls out, people have to look closely at because you may need to bring in more help than you had to before because teachers would come in and teach when they were sick, you know, I mean, they weren't and they're being asked to absolutely not do that now, you know. So it's just, I was looking at whether that adjustment, and it doesn't look like you fine tuned that yet. So hopefully there's some contingency funds or some ability to move around in the budget if you have to.
That's true. I think the only flip side or the only optimistic fiscal side, I should say of it, is that there's I did not see a scenario in the fall where secondary students were in school every day. I don't see that as being viable. And so that might mitigate some of what you're talking about, but you're absolutely correct. That it's it's something we're aware of, and we may have to use more internal staff simply from a sale, public health and safety perspective. Certainly, it's a hard job to be a substitute teacher, to be a substitute teacher in a socially distant school. We are going to have to do training for them, and we may have to just literally rely on existing staff to cover spaces and reconfigure things more than external staff coming in, not just for fiscal reasons, but from public health reasons as well. And and I want to publicly sing the praises, and I'll do it every moment I can, of Julie Fetterman, who is a rock star in terms of coordinating and connecting with us about this public health piece and how it connects to public education.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to others because I get another chance tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For anybody who's just tuning in on Amherst media right now, I just wanted to, or has in the last few minutes. We have two hearings this evening. They were scheduled at 6:30 and 7:00. But the seven o'clock meeting will begin at the conclusion of this hearing. The hearing that we're currently doing is about the proposed regional school budget, which has been presented to Amherst and the other three towns in the region and will require council action at the end of June. And what we are currently in is questions from members of the finance committee and the council. And then we'll see if there are questions or comments from members of the public. So Mandy Jo Hanicky, Mandy, your next person has to be recognized.
Thank you, Andy. My questions all sort of go to the same thing, but I'm going to try and ask them all together since they're somewhat related. I appreciate the new slide about the assessment method and decreases in budget and increases in in assessments and how that happens mid-year. Because I look at a budget and I look at the unknowns and I foresee budgets having to change. So I just want to confirm that, you know, we've got a proposed budget in front of us that actually shows an increase in revenue from the state. You've addressed that a little bit as to how I'm still confused as to how that is calculated as a decrease when it shows an increase and it comes off the total operating budget, and then you calculate the assessment required. Once we pass an assessment of whatever that would be about 16.4 million, if the state aid does not come in where it's assessed or in the budget, which is around 11 million right now and and change, that would, in theory, unless the budget itself decreases, the $32 million budget decreases, would require, the way I think about it, as either as an increase in the towns' assessments. And so I want to confirm that if state aid doesn't come in where the budgeted numbers are, the 11.7 showing on our budget on the fourth sheet of the slide, that if the regional school committee does not reduce the total operating budget of 32 million in response to a lower state aid, that Amherst would actually have to affirmatively pass an increase in assessment above the 6.4 16.4 million. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. And the next question sort of goes to that issue, which is I I've seen, I think DESI came out with some sort of guidelines on Friday about PPE and state, you know, classroom sizes and all. And some of that concerns me. No more than 12 people in a classroom is one thing I read. No more than 10 students in a classroom. That has severe budget implications, I can only guess. How is that manageable under a budget like this? And is is this budget, I guess the question is, is this budget reasonable given the guidelines we're seeing from the CDC, from the DESI? Are we going to be looking at, instead of a decrease based on revenue from a potential decrease in revenue from the state, are we going to be looking at a mid-year budget request to increase the budget? Or can you operate under this budget and CDC guidelines, I guess, is one of my questions? How how reasonable is that to expect?
Sure. Well, I can jump in a little bit. And if if Dr. Slaughter wants to add, he can. I mean, I think the regional school committee have a number of tools that's disposable, one of which you said could be engaged at towns. The region does have an E and D line, so it does have reserves. And depending what, if there's a gap, what that gap is, it could think to use that also as a school choice line. So I think there's a number of different scenarios that the school committee could use. It certainly would want to keep all the towns elected officials connected to that and in order to make decisions. In terms of, you know, in terms of the DESI guidance, let me clarify, what came out was that the class size piece was about summer school. If towns choose to have summer school, they have not come out, and that won't come out till next week about class size guidelines in classrooms. So we are analyzing class spaces. I think it's it's our estimates, depending on the classroom, 11 to 15 students can be in a class. The high school particulars are Frankenstein kind of building. It was built in three phases and, you know, so some classrooms have more space or a different orientation than others. I think, as I said last week, there is no scenario that I foresee that all all regional students will be back in school five days a week anytime with the current CDC guidance in place. I think as a little preview to our Thursday school committee meeting, we have we have two school committees this week. You know, the survey that I mentioned has over 700 responses, and I think for many people, it comes as a surprise to them that the CDC guidance will equate to a pretty significant shift in the number of days in school their children will be attending and the options. And I think Ms. McDonald and I were pretty clear about this. No one likes any of the options, right? And and that's true across the Commonwealth as well. And so I think to your point, the challenge will be, how do we meet the greatest number of students' needs in all three districts? Sorry, because my job is has all three districts. That's the way I'm thinking about this. And we're having a number of joint meetings for that purpose. And what's possible, what's advisable? But there there's no scenario I see where 950 students can be in the high school at a time. It's just not going to happen, right? And and I think the Gazette got the headline right. So whoever wrote that, I think it was Scott, well done, that we need to de-densify the schools, right? It's not just about number of kids in a school. It's all the other factors. Number of kids in a hallway, how do we get kids lunch, right? All those pieces contribute to it. So I think what is going to happen, and my my prediction is that we'll have to have a pretty thorough process. And as Ms. McDonald has been great about, we're engaging the public early and often, both with public presentations and surveys and surveys that we just put out is not the last one that we're going to offer. To be able to come to hopefully a community consensus of what's the most important thing in the long term for our students, and particularly as it relates to the educational debt or our achieving gap, that people use different terms that we have, that we have to weigh. And so it's going to be messy. It's not going to be clean. I think that another preview of the data is I wouldn't say there's consensus on a model or an option. I think there's going to be lots of discussion that needs to occur. But the reality is, you know, we're trying to be good fiscal stewards despite this situation. We are not unique. Every district's going through it. Unfortunately, some of our space needs are more challenging. For instance, the middle school has classrooms that don't have windows, which according to CDC guidelines is a big problem because the ventilation doesn't, it doesn't allow for external ventilation with a window. So we're analyzing all those pieces. So a long-winded way to say, you're right, it's complicated. You're right, the amount of funds that we have to give is is probably inconsistent with what's needed to do the best job that we wish we could do. Some of those are not short-term fixes. We can't pop out and build a window when there's no air on the other side of it. It's it's the rooms that are back to back. But I think what we're committed to is engaging the public with realistic scenarios, getting their feedback and making the best decision we can for our students. But there is no wonderful scenario. And I think comparing mid-COVID school to pre-COVID school is actually something that we have to start doing a better job. I have to start doing a better job communicating. It's not actually a helpful comparison. It's really about what mid-COVID school option versus other mid-COVID school options do we have? And there are fiscal implications, as you note, to all those decisions. You know, for instance, and then I'll stop because I could go on for this forever. It's a good question. And it's obviously what I'm breathing these days. You know, people are saying, well, why don't you rent, you know, a building or use the bank center or things like that, right? So every school building we used has to have a nurse, has to have an administrator in this. So it's not just simply about the spaces and getting more. It's actually the staffing that would accompany those spaces that makes it even more problematic than just, can we get a couple of classrooms here, there? If it wasn't a public health crisis, maybe we could make, we could get by with being more flexible. That's not in the cards for us this year. And so I think we have to live within our means, both from a space perspective. We're going to do our best financially. The PPE, the personal protective equipment email that you referenced that came on Friday, you know, the number of materials, a neighboring district, similar sized district estimated there'd be 400 pieces of PPE needed in the first couple of months. And that isn't free. We are working with the town, and I want to publicly suggest and state that the town has been wonderful about partnering with us on that. And and I feel very fortunate to be working with town staff and with the this community values education so much. Not everybody has that luxury. So long-winded, I apologize. I'll I'll be quicker next time.
Can I just?
Yes.
It's not 400, it's 400,000 pieces of PPE.
Oh, my apologies. I was so worried about timing, I lopped off three zeros.
400 did sound a little low.
No, 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 it's.
Dorothy? All right.
Did one quick thing?
I have a quick question. We've changed the way we do health insurance. Self-insured, but I just wanted to be sure that if Self-insured, but I just wanted to be sure that if a number of teachers did catch COVID nineteen and had extended and expensive hospitalization, would that affect our budget or would, since we're now part of a bigger system, would we keep our what's in the budget as our estimate?
I'll refer to Dr. Slaughter on that.
I can answer that. So the the short answer is it wouldn't really, it would likely when we go to renew our rates, we renew our rates each year. It might have an impact on our rates in fiscal twenty-two to some extent, but that's also going to be our experience in combination with everybody else's experience and it's a much bigger pool than we used to have. So I don't think it'll be too, too bad in that regard. You know, if if we had a significant draw on our insurance by virtue of a number of people being in expensive hospitalization or healthcare circumstances, yeah, it would have a negative impact, but it'd be mitigated to some extent relative to the others that are in the group with us. And they recognize that there's some peaks and valleys to things in some respects. There's one other thing I wanted to point out in in talking about, just back to 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 Mandy Jo's question around the revenue picture. The thing to keep in mind is in that revenue section of that slide, the fourth of five, and it it has it has a number of revenue sources, not all are state revenue sources, so the total is eleven point seven. But, you know, E and D and E and D for contingency are both money we've got in hand in reserves. We have additional reserves on top of that that we will also could potentially draw on, it would require, you know, action by each of the four communities to do that. If we were to utilize those those funds, those reserve funds. Interest revenue is also not a state aid piece. But charter reimbursement, some aspects of Medicaid, that depends on how much service we provide. Those all have variables and have state components to them.
I think if I could add one last thing is the other thing, we've really slowed down filling vacancies. And so we're waiting to see more state guidance because we do know there's uncertainty there. We've heard really, I've heard personally different, really different things for different state legislators and what to expect. And I'm not alone in that regard, I think that the municipal side is is probably in a in a similar space. So I think we've we've tried to be conservative on things that we could be moving forward as well.
Mandy, you have follow up?
Yeah, I just wanted to to track back, I had two parts to sort of my question on the revenue and then on the assessment. So if I could get maybe an answer to confirm the assessment understanding that I have that if we pass this budget and state aid decreases by twenty-five or thirty percent. And so the budget at thirty-two point one million is if your state aid isn't subtracting your eleven or ten percent, ten million out, it's only subtracting eight million out. Do we have to, if the school committee does not reduce the budget by that two million, say, does Amherst have to revote and approve an increase above the sixteen point four million dollars in assessment in order to be assessed higher? Even if the budget funded budget thirty-two point one four five million does not change?
The short answer is yes. However, I think if 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 the state aid dropped by that larger percentage, I think the school committee, I mean, my my suggestion, you know, as finance director, I think superintendent suggestion, perhaps the way the school committee would would take action would be to you know, review if there were any other and and we would be into the fiscal year a little bit, we would have a lot more clarity on exactly what the program we're trying to execute is is looking like. And so I think we would have a much better idea of how we might be able to reduce our expenditure even more. We'd have much better numbers on exactly what our staffing looks like, you know, right now we have projections on who and how many, you know, people we are anticipating needing and that sort of thing. We'll have much greater clarity on all of those types of things. So we'd look to obviously reduce our expenses and lower the overall budget as best we could before we went back to any of the four towns and asked for more. And we also factor in the fact that, you know, there's only so much capacity among the four communities to to take on additional expense. And so, you know, we we don't live in isolation here, we're trying to recognize that you know, each of our four member communities are are affected negatively as well when we are. And so we recognize that and and we'll take that into account.
And I'll just add to that, and I don't mean to be flip about it, and hopefully this isn't perceived that way. But if if chapter seventy drops twenty-five or thirty percent, no one's running school next year across the Commonwealth. The school year is getting incredibly more expensive. Towns across the Commonwealth do not have the capacity to make up that gap. And that, you know, you think of us, you can think of larger districts and what it would mean for twenty-five percent loss in chapter seventy for larger urban districts that are much more reliant on state aid than we are. So I think the state will have, and and that's, I know that's a political statement, but it's the truth. And so any advocacy that we can have from the town council, both the state and the federal government, we'd appreciate it just because we know the economy of the town isn't going to function if the schools aren't functioning.
Hey, well, thank you, I don't see additional questions right now from other members of the council or the finance committee. If there are additional questions, we'll have one more opportunity for counselors and the finance committee members to come back at the end. I want to make sure that we now take the time for those members of the public who are watching who wish to offer public comment by way of questions or comment or comments that they have. We asked you to limit your comments to three minutes and that you indicate if you are participating on the Zoom call, you can use raise hand to ask to be identified. And if you're participating by telephone, you can press star nine on your telephone. So I'll just give it a moment and President Grismer is going to let me know if there's anybody, I don't think that there is who's asked to be recognized.
There's nobody at this time.
Okay, so thank you. And is there any additional questions from members of the finance committee or members of the council? So seeing none, then I think that we can well, I have noticed that just just in time, Mary Lou Talman has asked to be recognized, Mary Lou.
Yes, we're talking about this as a plan and that's great, but are we talking about it just for the fall? Or is this for a whole year? This is a whole year from now and much has changed within the last three or four months. So between now and January, we may know far more and maybe schools will be in full session. So my question is, is this planned for the whole academic year or just for the fall semester at this point in time?
All right, Lou, if I know the answer to that question, I'd be going on TV left and right, I'd be selling the answer to that question. I would love to know, and I don't mean to be in jest. I I'd love to know that the answer to that question, I mean, I think, you know, some of this gets to vaccine and and timelines for vaccine. We, the reality is, we don't know. The CDC guidance, my clearer answer, and I apologize for the poor attempt at humor, but the CDC guidance has three steps, step one is schools are closed because the data, you know, and there's a whole chart on page nine of that document. The data shows that schools can be closed. Step two is that schools are open with enhanced social distancing. Step three is schools are open with social distancing. There is no step four until there's a vaccine. So your guess is as good as mine, I tend to be a pessimistic person on these kind of things. There are those who are more optimistic than me, I like those people, I hope that they're right, I pray that they're right, honestly, for in terms of people's lives. But I I it's not something I can predict. The challenge at the secondary level is that once we go down a road, we don't really have a great way to undo it. So let me give you really specific. So at the high school level, it's likely the case that we will have to adapt the schedule to reduce the number of sections that students attend a day. So when students are in, right now, they attend six classes a day, they have seven classes total and there's a drop schedule. That's not going to happen next year. There'll be fewer classes a day to reduce the number of opportunities that students are mixing with one another. You can't go back once you've gone down that path completely, students could be in school more, but you can't undo what you've set up and it might be a model where students are taking almost like more like a block schedule where they're in fewer classes, more time. If you look at the Beloit model, a lot of colleges are looking at, they're looking at having students take two classes at a time. I'm not saying that'll happen at our high school, but that's that's a common model that colleges are looking at, again, to promote containment. And so once you go down that model, you can't, it's not as easy to undo what you've started. So the short answer is it's complicated, we don't know. I hope the vaccine comes sooner. There are some commitments that will be made in the fall that may not be completely reversible, even if students are in more often. And so that is one of the vexing things of the situation, not only do we know what not know what state funding is, not know what the state model is that they're going to at least promote to us, we actually don't know how long this will last. And and that makes an additional challenge, it's exactly the right question to ask. Unfortunately, I can't give you a very satisfactory answer.
Well, a follow-up then would be, how does this impact the extracurricular for children and the sports, the MIAA?
So that's another thing we're waiting on, I mean, the the CDC guidance is pretty clear that they're really talking about sports that can be played with social distancing that eliminates some and it does permit others. I looked at Connecticut, they have released their sports plan for fall. You know, a great video, if you've just Google CDC Foundation, they have the they have the public health director or doctor from Mississippi as well as their school committee, head of their school committee association. And the public health doctor said essentially, you know, I can tell people not to play football all I want, it's Mississippi. People are going to play football, I was talking to Doug about this earlier. I think what we have to do is we have to be very cautious and I've been very conservative and and some people like that and some people don't, and I get that. That we're going to follow the public health guidance, that's going to drive our decision-making. And we're going to make the best public health, the best public education decisions based on public health and not the other way around, because I think when it's a slippery slope, once you go down, well, I think it'll be okay. And so MIAA and the state will come out with that information. And so I think it is a concern, it's also a concern for before and after-school programs. We do have an after-school program at the middle school as well as many, many, as you know, clubs and after-school experiences. But the key, one of the key principles in the CDC guidance is that students stay are in as few groups as possible. You don't want students mixing with other students and some of that's around how the virus spreads, it's also around if this virus virus comes, do you need to shut down a classroom or do you need to shut down the school? And for how long? So there's a lot of different reasons. You know, I tend to like some sports that would be contact sports, I like watching them. I'm not sure how likely it is that we can do that. Football is a good example, Dr. Slaughter knows very well. I like watching football games, our team had a historic season this year, it was fantastic. I'm not saying there won't be football, but that is a sport that's hard to play in a socially distanced manner.
Well, thank you very much for all the answers.
Thank you for the questions and and if there's no others, if there ends up being no others, thank you very much for the council for for having us and engaging us in, you know, a really uncertain time.
So I want to remind my fellow counselors that as last year, there was one presentation at the at the the equivalent of this hearing, which was much earlier in the budget cycle year, where the superintendent and finance director from the schools was present to present the budget and answer questions for us. And again, this is anticipated to be that meeting, that hearing. And we will be taking up the budget after discussion in the finance committee at the June twenty-ninth meeting, which is about the time that the town meetings in the other towns will be taking place. There is a process that would allow for a one-twelfth budget, which would be only used if we failed to get the three town meetings and the council and meeting votes in time. I don't know if my superintendent Morris, you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I think as the council knows that we did have to submit the request for the one-twelfth budget. The way it works under the state guidance is that we we submit that to Desi, to the state. If we don't have all towns agree on a budget by June first, we did indicate that we believe there's support for this budget. And as long as the budgets pass in all four communities by July first, it's not something we'll have to manage, but the state feels like they couldn't wait till June twenty-seventh, when two of our towns have town meetings. If if it failed at one of those meetings, that would give them very short timeline to set up a one-twelfth budget. So we did submit that document and just wanted to make sure the council and the and the public were aware that we we were asked to do that.
Okay, so with that, I decided to see no other hands raised and president has advised me that there's anybody from the public who's asked to participate. I want to thank Superintendent Morris, Dr. Slaughter and School Committee Chair McDonald for having spent the time with us in the public hearing this evening and for having participated in the hearing on this budget, which is, as I noted earlier, required by our Home Rule Charter. So thank you very much to the superintendent and the others who participated this evening. And with that, I am going to declare the first of our two hearings regarding the regional school budget to close and convene so that we can convene the other hearing. And I'll ask up for just a moment to ask the president of the council if she wishes to have us take a recess before going to the second hearing or so we move straight into the next hearing.
I think I think we should move in straight into it's past seven o'clock, it's seven thirty-five. And so let's just keep going.
Okay, so with that, I will convene the in color to the hearing for the one-month budget. And just to remind everyone of what we agreed to, that there is a the town manager is working with his staff on preparing a FY twenty-one budget, but in order to give more time until June twenty-ninth for the preparation of the presentation of that budget, we need to do one-month budget, which is to allow for appropriations to be made, to allow for operations during the month of July. And it will then be incorporated and become a part of the full-year budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent. And we will be following exactly the same procedure as with the last hearing with the same sequence presentation from the town manager and staff that he wishes to introduce and incorporate into his presentation. And then questions from all counselors and finance committee members. And again, I will try and recognize people just in order the hands go up and see if there are any members of the public who wish to ask questions or make comments. So with that, I turn it over to town manager.
Thank you, Andy. So first, I want to say, you know, thanks to the superintendent and finance director for the schools, Dr. Slaughter, terrific job. They do a phenomenal job and I they the work they have cut out for them is just immense. I I'm communicating with Mike seven days a week, every day, I can't, I think of a day that we didn't communicate at something during the last three months, so and it's, you should know that that's an unusual situation. He's a high communicator and it doesn't happen in many towns where the town side and the school side work so closely together. So it's a history for the town and I think that that's that's a terrific thing, I thank Mike and Doug and the school committee for the way they conduct this. Also want to recognize that we are being staffed by Athena O'Keefe and Serge Federowski, who are doing the staffing for this meeting. So if people see those names on the on the screen, that's there are this town staff supporting the council and the finance committee during this meeting. And tonight I'm joined by Sean Mangano, the finance director, and Sonia Aldridge, our comptroller, who will do the bulk of the presentation. This is one of our public hearings, as the chair said, and, you know, we had the region, we have the one-month budget. We will have a public forum on the capital improvement program. Then we'll have another public hearing on the FY twenty-one budget. And that will be followed by about eight individual finance committee meetings where we go into that budget in deep detail. So this is the beginning of the one-month budget. This is permitted, as the chair said, by virtue of a vote of the town council on April twenty-seventh that actually directed the town manager to create a one-month budget along these guidelines. So with that, I think Sean Mangano is going to take the lead, he has a few slides. This is going to follow very much the same format that that we made to the town council a week ago. So Sean? So Sean.
Thank you, Paul. Hello, everybody. So yeah, this is going to look pretty familiar to the presentation from a couple of weeks ago. We did add a couple new slides to respond to some questions that came in. So some of this will be a refresher. So a little bit about why we are going with the one month budget. We do have quite a bit of uncertainty this year, probably more than any other year I've been involved with. We need more time to gather information on some of our revenues and expenditures. And some of those major items that we're looking at are what the colleges and universities are going to do in terms of reopening and what that means for our local economy and the expenditures associated with the colleges and university, what the K-12 schools, library and other town services do. You just heard a great presentation from the superintendent and school finance director. There's a lot going on there and may have some additional costs. So we have to keep an eye on that. The state budget and what our state aid sources look like, state and federal government aid programs. So aside from our regular state aid that we get from government, what else is coming in? We have the CARES Act. We've got a pretty good handle on what's available right now. But there is talk about the scope of some of those funds possibly being broadened so we can use it for revenue replacement. But that hasn't happened yet. So we're keeping a close eye on that. And then just keeping an eye on our local economy and the local receipts. Since the last time we presented this, we've been able to dive into our enterprise funds quite a bit more and gauge the impact on water, sewer, parking and solid waste to get a sense of what's going on with those revenues and forecast those into the future. So a lot of unknown around these different areas. And for that, that's why we're putting forward a one month budget. The total one month budget is on your left and it'll be the same on every slide. The total is $11,570,046. And it's broken into the different functional areas and then enterprise funds. It is a one month budget. It's not a 1/12 budget because it does include some large one time expenditures, or really one large one time expenditure. But it also factors in actual spending patterns as well. So I will scroll down. So this budget gives us the authorization to expend funds in July. If we didn't do it, and we would have to have a full budget by July 1. We came up with these amounts by using our accounting system to see what has been spent in the past and also consulting with department heads to get a sense of whether, you know, the historical spending aligns with what they think they need for the coming year. The Hampshire County Pension Assessment is the one sort of the single really large expenditure that is paid during the month of July. It's paid during July because the pension system gives us a discount if we pay it all upfront. And it's a pretty sizable discount. So most, most communities in the pension system do pay it all upfront. This is not intended to replace our full FY21 budget document. You will still get the nice 200, 300 page document electronically at some point. It does not include any additions or reductions. So there's no programmatic or operational changes in this one month budget. This is just to get us through to the the full budget. We'll get into much more conversation around the any proposed additions or reductions during that time. And the hope is that the 12 month budget will completely replace this one month budget. So we're not going to bring forward an 11 month budget to you, which kind of, you know, you can't really get the historical context for that. We're going to bring forward a full 12 month budget, which will replace this one month budget during the month of July. So as I said, it's not a 1/12 budget. And I will you call upon my experience at the schools to explain why. So the schools are a good example. They the salaries go way down during the summer because some staff at the at the schools are only paid from September through July. So you'll see salaries go way down for July, but you'll also again get that pension assessment that hits during the month of July. So that's why it's not exactly a 1/12 where expenditures are equal every single month. We really did look at actual spending and then take into account, you know, a little bit of an increase for for the inflation, things of that nature. There was a question on the retirement assessment, which is a separate item in the one month budget. You'll see it's there at $6,192,108. That's just the general fund portion of the retirement assessment. The question that we received was, what is the amount for those other areas? So we did include those here so you can see the different amounts, which are included in those other enterprise funds. And there's a question about what are the most significant one time expenses? So really, the pension assessment is the really significant one time expense. There are a few other little ones that will vary by department. Sometimes there's maintenance agreements that are paid in July that you pay for the full year subscriptions. There's sometimes longevity payments that come up. But those are very small relative to the to the one large expense that I've described. So there's a question about whether capital is included in these enterprise funds budgets. It isn't currently. It will be part of the 12 month budget conversation. But right now, this is just to keep the enterprise funds going for the month of July. And the last question that we received was what I mentioned a little bit before, you know, how we looked at the impact of COVID-19 on the enterprise fund revenues and expenditures. And we have, we've been looking at consumption of water and sewer consumption and particularly the impact of the college not being in session on those enterprise funds because it water consumption, sewer consumption went down. Also, parking, the fact that there's not a lot of usage of parking right now. We haven't been collecting, we haven't been charging fines and things of that nature. So parking revenues also went down. So we are looking at that for the 12 month budget conversation. And we'll have much more to present for that 12 month budget on enterprise funds. And with that, I will turn it over back to the chair. Andy, you're muted still. You're still muted, Andy.
So I think now we're here. So thank you very much for the presentation. And some of the questions that I had posed in advance have been answered. But this now becomes a time for members of the council and the finance committee to ask questions. So I will be, as I said earlier and did in the first round, be looking for raised hands and respond and then try and recognize people in the order in which they I see the hands are being raised. And the other things that I'd like to remind you of is that there is a series that goes on because we really have the capital budget. There will be a separate forum that's required by a different section of the charter that requires that there be a forum on the regarding the capital plan. And that's required to be a council forum. And so it will be called by the president of the council in accordance with the charter provision. There will also be a second hearing because if you look at the charter, it requires that there be a hearing on the FY21 budget, which is the finance committee is tentatively scheduling for July 13. And the in addition to to this hearing about the one month budget. And the council vote is anticipated that we will be as finance committee reporting back to the council in order to be able to take a vote on the one month budget on June 15. The annual FY21 budget to be presented on June 29. And a series of meetings of the finance committee has been previously noted. So turn to my colleagues on the council, the finance committee. Does anybody have questions? I see Kathy, you have first question. So.
I just jumped in when I didn't see other hands. I have one that's more general about what we know already. As you, when I looked at the one month, Sean, you just explained and it was very clear why some of these one months are less than a 1/12 of the budget guidelines. The the regional school is, I think, exactly. Do we have a sense now? Or when will we? Will we have it early July? Were there savings on this year's operating budget? Because we had less overtime. Some, you know, with with staff that could if state aid is down, if some other things are down or when we come back. So it's not so much this one month. But is any was any of that figured into this one month? That you know that you've got some money that if expenses come in more than we expected for the town as the town services, as people start to come back, that that helps buffer it. And so that's question number one. And the other one is pretty easy. I I Paul gave me an answer to it, but I'll just ask it here. Is is the 2% COLA figured for all the non union staff in this budget? And if yes, when we go to the full budget, does any decision we make around the one month budget affect decisions we might want to make later on the full year budget? So and that would be just an example, but also on staffing and other things that we'll see in the full year.
Yeah, so I'll start. Is that okay, Paul, if I start? So I think your first question was about looking at this year and what expenditures look like this year. And has that been factored into what we're thinking about for next year? I'll let Sonia speak to that a little bit. She is working on projections for what the rest of this year looks like to determine if there's any savings this year. Or we're pretty confident we're not going to need any additional funds at this point. And anything that does get turned back this year will go into our planning around the use of reserves going forward. Sonia, do you want to talk a little bit about the process you're doing right now? After you want to get yourself?
Yeah, thanks, Sean. I'll figure this out eventually. Yes, I was looking at it quickly today. Our revenues are coming in better than I expected. So I don't think we're going to be, we might have a small deficit, but not as much as I thought it was going to be. Remember, I said about 500,000. So and then we have, we have lots of savings because we had vacant positions for quite a while in the operating budget, which will offset any deficit in revenue. And whatever is left would fall to free cash. We can't commit it for next year's budget. It would just fall to reserves. I don't have figures right now. Everyone's handing in their carry forwards, what's out there committed that needs to get paid. It's going to be a process before I have final numbers.
And normally, just to add to that, a lot of that, we don't find out the final number until the end of July or even into August, when everything is completely stopped and we can reconcile everything. Your second question was about the cost of living adjustment increases. So that was factored into this one month budget. Those have been rolled forward at the 2%. Paul, do you want to speak a little bit about the if there's any changes after that?
Yeah, so we did put the 2% in this, just as the schools did. And that would go into effect on July 1. The 2% is what all the other unions, all the unionized employees are receiving. So to single out the non union employees, I thought was not fair. And also, they're the ones, the ones who are doing the bulk of the work right now and getting through this very difficult time. So again, you know, in alignment with what the school department has done, that's what we're proposing as well.
I just just want to make sure people understand my question on COLA. I wouldn't, you know, I would completely agree that the moderately or lower paid staff, and I'm just looking at what some other entities have done, not towns necessarily, where the very top people have said, we can forego that small increase this year or for part of the year. So that was the question. But I think you also had told me by email, Paul, is that all these decisions can be revisited with the 12 month. And I mean, there are no furloughs in here now. I mean, we don't really know much about staffing here if if things go south.
Right, so the tool that we would use is sort of is the same tool the university would use, which is is using now for FY20, actually. But we don't really compare ourselves to the university. Our situations are totally different. Our pay schedules are totally different. We do compare ourselves to other communities. And, you know, our neighboring communities are doing the same thing we are here. So and in terms of implementation of that, I think that we would implement them on on July 1, as I said. Oh, and then what I want to add is the tool that we do have in our possession is the furlough tool. And that can have the same impact as a not including the cost of living. And that's a better tool in my mind and from, you know, Sonia and Sean's mind, because that's something that we can apply across the board. So if we have to, if we have a big deficit and we have to cut it, we can and we have to reduce our expenses, we would ask all employees to say, take a little bit of a cut instead of a small number of employees taking a very big cut. So we can do that in the course of the year when we need that tool. So it's the use of furloughs is something that I think is much more understandable to employees as well. If if we show a deficit and employees understand that we have to cover that deficit through reduction of of costs and everybody's sharing the pain in essence. And they're not working. So there's a there's a feeling like, oh, I'm not working. I'm therefore I'm not getting paid. And so I find that that's a much better tool. It's more flexible and we can we can call it to order when we need it. And if that happens and if we find out in November, December, whenever we need it, we can, we can pull it, pull the trigger on that.
Sonia, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we've used the the COLA method before where we've not given COLA to the union or we've cut pay like $1,500 across the board or for the lower paid non union employees and stuff. And it throws our pay scales off. We just just actually recovered from the last time we did that last year. So it really throws everything off. So the most efficient way to do it is with furloughs across the board.
Well, I'm not seeing any other question. People who have their hands raised right now. I just before asking to see if there's anybody from the public who wishes to speak, will ask one thing, which is confirmation. There is a difference between, of course, level services, which was the measure of the budget that we originally had thought we would be asking in there was in the first set of guidelines that the council issued. And then level funding, which is what the current level is by whatever increase in amounts was. And usually, when you go between those two, there are adjustments that have to be made in either staffing or programs. And we'll get into this discussion in greater detail with the full FY21 budget. But I'm assuming that you have that there are no significant changes in staffing or programs that are built into the one month budget at this point. And that just want to get that confirmation, if that's correct assumption.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Not from a budgetary standpoint, there isn't. There may be operational because of COVID-19. And, you know, things that happened last summer might not happen the same way this summer, just as we all would expect. But there are no budgetary programmatic reductions built into the one month budget.
So anyone else from the council who wishes to ask any questions at this point or from the finance committee? Because again, this is going to move fairly quickly with the schedule we have this being before the council on June 15. Seeing nobody who's asked from the council. For members of the public, again, remind you that this is a public hearing. And so we welcome questions or comments. Ask each try and limit anything. If you do wish to comment or ask a question to three minutes, that if you're participating by Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. If you're participating by telephone, you can use the star nine on your telephone to indicate to us that you wish to be recognized. So I will pause for a moment and ask the president, who is going to monitor this to make sure to let us know if there's anybody who's asked to be recognized.
Nobody at this time.
So there there is none. I do see one council counselor who's asked to be identified. And I will. And I will keep an eye or president will keep an eye on the attendees list to make sure that nobody's come in late. But I'm going to recognize now there's two counselors, but counselor Pam first and then counselor Brewer in that order. So Dorothy.
Okay. I just want to make a comment that I have heard from a number of people that they would prefer in the future if we had a meeting and not a webinar so that they could be seen and participate, feel that they're more in the room with us. I know there's technical problems, but I think that there's an attempt to work on that. So I'm just making the point now because it's been spoken to me. I've been, it's been passed on to me a number of times recently. Andy, I'd like to.
Yeah. Dorothy, thank you for bringing that up. And I just say that, not related to this hearing, but separately today, we had a conversation with IT to see whether or not we can figure out some kind of registration system that allows people to come into meetings and be seen. So we're working on it. We're very aware of it. It's a comment, a comment that came up regularly during our district meetings and also now periodically during council meetings. Okay. You have one other comp, hand up.
Yeah, I do. Alyssa.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, since I know the finance committee will be meeting tomorrow, that I completely support the schools and the towns approach to COLAs and future furlough considerations using that as a tool, either potentially later in the year or hopefully not until the following year. Because we have no reason to believe following year is going to be great. And, you know, recognizing what was said clearly about we work to be both an employer of choice and to be comparable to our peer communities. And we're not in any way, shape or form, anything like the UMass Athletic Department and how it's talking about little teeny tiny give backs from certain people. That's not the way our salaries are set up at, at either the school or the town level. So I am very appreciative of the thought that went into that and looking at what we did in the past when we did make a straight dollar figure cut. And it was a mistake, as many people suggested at the time, and it created ill will. And it also didn't help us in terms of getting to our other goals. So thank you for thinking through all those different possibilities because I know a lot of different people are doing it different ways.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mary Lou.
As I said, but whatever we do, it needs to be consistent across the town and the schools and the library. So if we're doing COLAs, it's for everyone and not COLAs here and something else there. And the, I have a second question about the budget in terms of, is there anything in here for summer programs for children or are we not going to do LSSE this summer?
I'll let Paul weigh in because he's spoken with Barb about this. There is a budget for the community services of LSSE in here, but Paul can talk more about what that might look like.
Yeah. So the guidelines came out for how to do summer camps and they're so onerous that we've determined that we cannot do municipal camps this year. And we really feel terrible about that because I know a lot of people depend on it. But the types of camping experience that children would experience under the, the guidelines that the state has put down would not make it doable for us. So we will not be offering camps and we will be making an announcement about that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from members of the council? If not, then I think that we can call a hearing of the finance committee to a close. Finance committee will be meeting tomorrow afternoon at two thirty. We'll have a discussion about the one month budget over, we have a couple of days that we can do, a couple of meetings where we can do that. But it will be before the council and of course, council will have the opportunity to ask additional questions of the town manager at that time, since it is a regular council meeting and town manager is at council meetings. So that there is one more opportunity unlike the region budget for, I kept driving home the point that we made that might not have the opportunity to directly as counselors, ask questions of the superintendent, but we certainly can of the town manager. So having seen no other hands being raised either from members of the council and finance committee or members of the public. I think that we can conclude the hearing for this evening for the one month budget. And I want to thank the town manager and finance staff, Mr. Mangano and Ms. Aldridge for their participation this evening. And that will enable us to adjourn the finance committee meeting. And I turn it over then to President Griesmer to conclude whether there's any additional business or whether she wishes to adjourn the council meeting.
I just want to remind us that next week at five thirty, we have an information meeting about the capital budget. At six o'clock, we have the public forum. And at six thirty, we have our regular council meeting with a very, very full agenda. Other than that, meeting's adjourned.